You do well?
To a star.
He reads the chat for us sometimes.
Get that in?
TV land.
These are nice.
We have 300,000.
What's that say?
Well, yeah.
Totals thirteen million.
One hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Thank you.
We don't have.
Ten percent of thirteen, there's only three, about 300,000.
Yeah, we have half that. Like six hundred.
Oh, good. Right check.
They just took off today and next week and then they'll be back. Yeah, because a lot of the kids are at camp.
Yeah, so I set it up today.
Oh, thank you again. Oh, sorry about that. Sorry for your extra effort.
That's okay. You should've stayed over at the market, Jeff, and he would've never gotten you.
That's right.
It's a good point. Wow, watch though.
How are you?
Accelerate. How are you?
Did you turn my light on?
Yeah, it goes a little thing and then it goes over towards turn.
Looks like a rectangle.
Hey, man. From the most one.
Oh, they knew you were on the can.
Yeah, right. They got really nice controls. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Right, yeah.
Well, they bought it after nineteen forty-two. Tags, you know, which not in old.
They're not doing anything now anyway.
Feet, five, draw, zero.
All of that property down down in the river.
Yep. I was on. There's so many colors.
Sure.
Sure.
You know, all the gold in.
I wasn't sure.
They're different here.
Everyone they go block everyone.
They were talking.
Yeah.
I think I know.
Yeah. There's a bunch of different.
They have their. You know, you see this stuff.
Yeah, this is just an adjustment on the first page.
By the river there.
Yeah. I think it's a difference in the.
Right evaluator, revise bill.
Where did that have been involved? So, we didn't know that.
And then that.
Okay.
I'm not paying you. When I don't understand what's happening.
A lot of that.
In regards to what?
He's bought. She presumably revised. And she came nine hundred dollars. And so, she.
She emailed. She said.
Sunday at eight a.m. Why didn't she?
She got the revised bill. And you built that.
Yeah.
She's got the revised.
Did you actually get adjustments to the time zone out there?
Personal bills. You got the shots.
Yep.
So, everything. We got the revised bills. And so, revised the.
Of course, out there.
Right.
I got, I got. She did not want.
You're providing the weather.
People in two. I had her.
Yeah, the two ways. Yeah.
My dad actually saw this.
Well, you got, you got the viable sections.
Yes.
And you showed us.
Yeah.
I have.
How'd you go, bud?
It's about the truth.
It goes on.
Yeah.
So, I.
So, what we took. So, the revised bill. Mine is nine twenty.
She has not sent the bill.
Yeah, this is the three. Oh, yes. Yes. Which you saw. Oh, totally. That night. So, she. She's got nine twenty. Yeah. And so, there's the amount of those. So, we.
Right, I see what you did on that one. I did on mine and I took your whole eleven thousand dollars.
No, we took nine hundred.
So, I've still got the tax.
But she's got. We took nine. So, you can either.
Put me with you.
You can either accept your dollars or I can choose like nine or four. You can sign. And say.
We're just trying to.
You have two dollars. You have two dollars. There's more. Two dollars. So, if you remove all of your.
I have. I have some people on both sides. Isn't it? Yeah, I have decent.
Who's agreed to say six, seven, three, six thirty-five. Take your whole one hundred and eighty. Almost twelve years.
You don't.
She wants to talk.
She's the revised.
That's fine.
Okay.
She's going away. There seems to be a problem.
Okay. So.
All right, we're gonna, I'll come up with a new number. Thank you, everybody, for being here. It's now seven oh two. Sorry for delay. Let the roll call show that everybody's here except for Mary Sharnock. We're gonna set the agenda in a small fashion in that Gary LaRose from Vermont Trans Project manager is not here to discuss the project for the main street bridge. She did send us a letter at five twenty.
Four twenty-five.
Four twenty-five. That shows the project has gone from, what was the original cost?
About eight million.
About eight million to eleven million and a half.
Plus.
Of which, we have to pick up five percent. And we have five percent of twelve million is ten percent is a million two. Half of that is six hundred thousand. And we have three hundred thousand. So, it's going to be tough in the budget year to get there. You will have more as we know more. Sherry Tucker from Tucker Sand, are you here?
I'm Sherry Tucker. Yes, we are here.
Sherry, Ron. So, the people in TV land can see you. Did you come up the podium and just address them from there? Ron doesn't have to, if you don't.
Ron, no, Ron says.
All right. Yeah. Come on up, Ron, up to the podium.
Where is the podium?
Right up there.
Okay.
You can rest your notes on there.
Lector.
Relax. Sweetie. Thanks, Pam. You want me to give you a quick brief of what's going on? Or do you want, you want to just start?
No, you can.
All right, this is Ron Tucker. His, his family has a long history of providing material for the town, the form of sand, gravel, and everything else, and advice. And they have a parcel of land that is promoted to have about a hundred years' worth of material on for the town of Northfield, roughly.
I, I, no, I don't think it's a hundred years.
All right.
I think it might be a hundred thousand yards.
Hundred thousand yards.
So.
If you use four to five thousand yards, you have twenty. That's just at ground level. At the tracks.
All right.
That's not going down.
So, and he's made an offer for a price on this. It's, it doesn't include the railroad crossing, right?
It does not.
Okay, so, tell TV land what you got, Ron.
Well, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Ron Tucker. I am here representing Ari Tucker in tonight. And like Charlie just said, we are here trying to sell you a piece of land. The reason we want to sell it is as. Sir. The permit process and the railroad crossing, too much of a burden for the amount of material that is in there for us to make it commercially viable. And.
Can't cover manager, I'll do like wash your feet. She's just not.
Actually, it's your microphone, so we don't get interrupted by your microphone in your, in your house. Thank you.
I was saying, as a producer, for me, if I had to pay for the permitting process and the railroad crossing, I would have to sell that out in maybe three to four years wholesale, just to try to recoup. And I don't think I could viable. Whereas, the municipality, as you well know, that is a, not a grandfathered pit, but it's always been a pit. We crushed for the town of Roxbury in the late seventies. And the bottom of that section, when Don Nguyen was running the town. And the upper part was also crushed out of, not only front railroad, but also silted railroad as bankfront gravel. So, it's sort of a grandfathered pit. And as a municipality, if that is the case, you guys gotta do is dot your i's across your t's, your permits.
Does Northfield ever have their own pit, Ron?
Not that I know of.
I don't think so.
Uh, no, excuse me. No. They did down in Falls School. The Old Falls School. That was an old gravel pit for the town of Northfield.
And it's now our staging area.
And now, it's your staging area.
Okay.
Roxbury had that, Roxbury had various, as well as other towns had various pits around the area. And Northfield actually had one way up on Bull Run. Way up on Bull Run. Then, they had one where the old town garage used to be at the foot of Bull Run.
Yeah.
Before you needed an Act two fifty permit. So, the only point I'm trying to make here is, for you as a municipality, all you do is gotta put your paperwork in, and the state says, go for it. Now, let's get to the railroad crossing. For me, at this point in time, who owns that rail line now is Genesee Wyoming. We've owned the land for almost thirty years. And there's been four different railroad companies that have owned that. And we get conflicting messages from each one of them. Some of them say, we only need to put a insurance policy on the crossing so you can cross it and extract. Genesee Wyoming says no. Full crossing. Well, Ari Tucker can't afford that. That's three to five hundred thousand dollars up there. There's no electricity. They won't do solar. But as a municipality, you are open to state and federal funding for an upgrade.
As well as making that a town road.
If you wanted.
Make that a town road.
That would be a town road. And it's, it wouldn't cost you a nickel. They'd just put it in, just like they've been doing the last few years, all the way down through the CV line.
The CV line being the railroad.
Yes.
Right. And they're now called.
Genesee Wyoming is what now owns the CV line.
So, I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna write it down this time, so I don't forget. What is it, Wyoming?
Genesee Wyoming.
Genesee Wyoming.
Genesee and Wyoming.
Genesee and Wyoming. Just like the beer. I wouldn't know anything about beer.
The state owns certain Jacksonville.
Right. All right, I'm sorry. Ron and I have been having a conversation back and forth. I would like to invite the best of the board in on this conversation.
I have no questions.
We have done extensive core samples on this property over the last five years for the town of Braintree. We tried to sell that piece of land to them originally. I think you remember when I was in here for a subdivision for this property.
Okay.
Which you granted me. And they were, they didn't, uh, they weren't interested for various reasons.
They were interested, they just, because they didn't own the prop, they didn't own, they weren't, they couldn't, that couldn't become a town road, which was huge for the.
As a municipality, if you buy outside your district.
Yeah.
Outside your township, you still have to pay taxes.
Right.
And you're not eligible for state federal funding on things like a railroad crossing. So, that's why we're here tonight.
Amy?
I don't have any questions right now.
Well, if I can interpret that, that means as soon as we get all the facts, she'll have a lot of questions.
There's a lot to think about.
It is a lot to think about.
It is, but it's longevity.
Right.
It's, it's a source of material that will last you for a very, very long time, whereas for me.
Excuse me.
I'm not willing to do it. It doesn't make good business sense for me to do it. To just put all that money upfront just to recoup maybe a thousand dollars at the end and just deplete it. It needs to last. And for a municipality to have it, it's gonna be the best. And let's face it, it's an exhaustible resource. They're not making any more of it. And we're seeing it, I'm seeing it as a producer, all over the area. Our road sand is becoming harder and harder to find. And for you, it's beautiful sand and gravel. I wouldn't make your road gravel out of it and your sand out of it. I would make just road sand. I would crush it all to three-quarter inch minus or half inch minus, whatever you prefer, and keep it. And that's what a lot of my customers over the last fifteen years, municipalities like Braintree, Hyde Park, there's ten others that are seeing the writing on the wall where we can go to our local quarry and get our road material, 'cause it actually works better. But we cannot get our road material, or our road sand, our ice control from a quarry. That needs to be natural. So, they're taking all that natural sand and gravel and making it last. Crushing it to three-quarter minus for ice control. And that way, it's only, what do you guys use? Four to, four to five thousand? That's what your bid is every year that I receive? Four to five thousand yards of ice control sand at three-quarter minus. You're right, that could be a hundred years for the town of Northfield. I doubt it, but it's at least twenty. At a set, at a set price, you're gonna have to hire someone to manufacture it. But my cost right now to manufacture a three-quarter inch minus sand and gravel is five dollars a yard.
Okay, this includes the bridge off of twelve A?
It does.
Okay. Excuse me.
There is a migrating right-of-way. My brother owns a piece of land above this parcel. Parcel, you're looking at about twenty-one plus or minus. My brother owns sixty above it. And he'll have full access with the bridge, with the road, until you get to the so-called gravel pit. But then, as you progress, it's called a migrating right-of-way. The town will be responsible for maintaining an access through that little portion, so he has access. This has all been engineered through Rob Townsend. And he's worked on things like this before. And the way that land lays, there's actually only one spot where that migrating right-of-way can go. And so, you only have to change it once, and then he'll have full, full access. So, it's not like it's gonna change fifteen times over fifteen years. The first year, as you phase this project, his road will have to be changed, but that'll be the last time it'll have to be changed. So, it's very simple.
That's all I got. Sounds to me like we need to have a talk. We can't possibly sit down here in fifteen minutes' time and make a decision. I think you wouldn't expect that of us.
Oh, not, not. So, I, I always thought this was just a preliminary meeting. It's gonna have to be more.
We'll have to get all the, all the, all the documentation, dog and pony show, the soil samples, all the information that you've given Braintree, essentially, they probably give it to us for nothing. But everything that's out there as far as the science of this, and then the business manager is gonna have to do a cost-benefit analysis, and we're gonna have to put this under a microscope, 'cause the Northfield doesn't have after the letter we just got. What, what? We're gonna have to borrow to do anything like this. And the cost of borrowing is, I'm speaking as one member of the board. I'm, there's four other people who will see things differently than I may. But to accomplish this, we're gonna have to borrow on prices.
Well, this is not fire sale. And the product does not perish.
Nope. Well, I have one question that you just, you just activated. How willing is Mr. Tucker to finance this deal?
I'll think about it. I would think about it. There has to be terms, obviously.
I just, that's just.
I'm open to that, absolutely. I've never liked to be anybody's banker. I can tell you that. I'm, I'm a few customers' banker right now, but that's, get taken care of quite shortly. But I've never worried about a municipality. The only time was back in the sixties when we were crushing for the town of Victory. And someone was investing money, and we had to wait about six months for our money. And that's the only time. So, yes. We always trust our municipalities.
Quick question. So, when, when's the last time materials been harvested out of there? In a couple of years?
It was during Irene.
Yeah.
During Irene. But it's been an active site for, since, like I said, when we were in there for Roxbury in the late seventies in the bottom portion, and we actually just drove through the river when they would let you do that. And we're, we are the ones, Ari Tucker is the one that built the bridge. And we actually, during that time, the railroad had a monstrous washout just a little bit south of there. And so, we loaded railcars with their, on their right-of-way, the gravel that they owned. They hired us to load those railcars to take down, to dump, you know, side dumpers to fix that. And then, so they allowed us to basically build that road that's there now. And it's always been an agricultural crossing. It's just when you turn it to commercial, all the rules change. But as a municipality, you're sort of exempt from that because you're not commercial. And especially if it's deemed as a town road, then you would be eligible for all the upgrades.
And your activity would not be consistent. It would be, it would be intermittent activity.
Absolutely, that's one point. Thank you, Sherry. That's one point that I forgot to make. It's not open to the public. You know, you guys put your sand up during a certain amount of time. You take two weeks or two and a half weeks, get on it and get it done. So, that's the only time you'd be using the crossing. So, it'd be very intermittent. Site distance, excellent. Four hundred feet to five hundred feet, both directions. It's just that I don't know if anyone on this board is any dealings with the railroad.
Oh, yes. Ask the manager.
Okay, so, I don't need to say any. They don't like to do anything.
Is it getting better since Canadians left? I remember Canadian National Railroad, you couldn't do anything unless you spoke French.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but they're just particular.
They take a long time to respond.
They do. They do, but as a municipality, I think you've got a little bit more full power than I do.
Yeah, just real quick one. So, you had indicated that Rob had done site survey quantities. Do you have data on the amount? Do they come up with quantity numbers?
We do.
Oh, good. That'd be very helpful.
Yeah, we do. And we can work on that a little bit more. As a preliminary meeting, I just wanted to get it all out here. But yes, and I'll work on the town of Braintree. I mean, it's all public knowledge. I should be able to get those test results on the test holes that we dug. If I can't, and even if I do, I think if we have our first site visit, I have another machine there, and we'll dig some more. So, you can see what's there. And it's very evident. It's a wonderful deposit. Follows that whole thing up through there.
The golf cart trees, like.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's the only reason it's still there, it's 'cause of the railroad track. Otherwise, it'd be already depleted. But I think it's something we're looking into for the town of Northfield. And I think it's very. And I think it's a very viable source, something that could last you guys a long time as a private-owned gravel pit down north of it.
Have you approached the town before?
I have not, only to get the subdivision for this piece of land. And the question, anybody from the audience have questions for me?
You have a good presentation, Ron. It's not your first show talking dirt.
Nope.
No, it isn't. Probably won't be my last either.
Likely so.
Rock on.
Rock on.
That's what we do. Make little rocks out of big ones. Somebody's gotta do it.
It's good, we're glad to have you as a neighbor. So we'll, we'll caucus with him, see what we can get out of Braintree. We too will ask for that data. And it's, I'm sure, we'll start putting together a plan and start, we'll probably have a committee. We have a highway committee. We'll put them on it so that we can caucus and figure out what information we need to have. If we've never been in the pit-owning business that required to follow the rules. We certainly have, I can point out, a number of pits that have been developed before someone said you can't do that. So we'll, we'll have to follow the rules.
Well, yes. But it's, it's a very streamlined process through Act 250 to, as for a municipality, I've seen it many, many, many times.
Okay, good enough.
And, yeah, but you do have to follow the rules. But up there, there isn't really too many rules to follow. There's not too many waterways, there's not too many intermittent streams.
That's why we need to have this talk, Ron.
Exactly, you're, you're, you talk to a district coordinator and have a site bid, they should be there. You should have Susan Baird meet us right there, I've known her all my life. And she'll, she's excellent. It's, it's a perfect place for a town to have a gravel pit. It's low-impact, you're not taking a hundred thousand yards a year out of there, you're taking four, maybe five. It's easy.
Thanks. Does anybody else have any questions for the online audience? Hearing that, thank you, Ron. We'll be in touch.
Thank you very much.
This is interesting.
Wonderful to see you guys.
Well, that was a very interesting presentation. And last to think about, I think we're gonna have a little bit of work to do in the coming future. Next topic under public participation is Ann Donahue, Vermont State Representative, regarding the Habitat for Humanity. Please, Ann, come on up.
Thank you very much. Actually, different hat, I'm happy to be your state representative, I'm not here in that capacity. I am here as the interim chair of the Northfield Building Committee for the Habitat for Humanity project here in Northfield. And I suppose probably some word may be out already, but we wanted to give you a heads-up of what we're doing, just real initial sense, so you know who's involved and who to come to, and we can keep up the dialogue and keep you informed. So you probably know that Habitat, Central Vermont Habitat bought a piece of land in Northfield. It's a lot that's been for sale for a long time at the corner of Dogwood Glen and North Main Street. And the, they work as, as an organization, as a nonprofit, is through a local building committee, local leadership, people who are involved and interested in housing projects. And that's where I'm right now, is with the committee. I'm the interim chair, interim because part of the startup work, but starting in January until about May, I'm gonna be a little busy, tied up with some other stuff. And, and so I'll be handing it off for a while. But we've got a lot of people pulling together already. We've started twice a month meetings, planning. The phase, the timing phase right now is we have RFPs out for excavation and concrete slab in the hope that those will go in before winter, so that we'll be ready to start construction in the spring. So those just went out, and we hope to hear back. We have some good interest and people who are ready to, to work on it this fall. We are very focused on starting to develop community links. We're planning to have a community meeting sometime in the fall, where we invite folks to learn about the project, to learn about how they can help. Because you've probably heard enough in the past about Habitat to know that it is a fundamentally volunteer-based project. The whole idea of the community together, working, helping actually work with the homeowners, building with the guidance, of course, and lead of, you know, the experts. But a lot of great work they've been doing for years, so I'm really excited about them doing the project here in Northfield. I did bring just as a little, a little trepidation, because we work as a committee. Our next meeting is Thursday, and that's when a subgroup of us, actually, Tom Bright is our volunteer coordinator, Jan is here tonight, she's working on our community outreach. And so we've been working on an initial flyer for inviting people to the community meeting. And it's, it's not official yet, because he hasn't seen it. So I know this is, I know this is a public meeting, if I give it out to you, then it's public information. But I just wanna make it clear, it's labeled draft, I only brought actual copies for board members. But it's just to give you an idea about the project. And that's basically what I wanted to say today, was just to give you that, that heads-up. And, you know, feel free to be in touch with questions. Some folks, Tom Davis has been a big help, he's been coming to meetings. Yeah, and so the Rotary, the Rotary just gave us a little grant for, we're, we're working on a possible little fundraiser that's really to try to help educate the community, you know, yard-seared, free hot dogs kind of thing, that's, you know, tentative in the works. But, but they, they gave us the money for the hot dogs. So there's a lot of good interest already. Norwich has some leadership people very interested, particularly in their construction trades and so forth. So we're pretty excited.
Dave, do you have any questions?
Yes. So what is the criteria to become a resident of this newly-built facility?
That's a great question. And, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily use the term resident, because you become homeowner. You, you own the home.
I was hesitant to say that.
Yeah, no, it, it is a homeowner. And there is a, there's a screening committee, people apply. This is for people who are, are ready for the step of homeownership, and to help them in their step forward in stability. There are people who can demonstrate they're able to, for instance, pay a mortgage. There's a lot of assistance, because it's low-interest or even non-interest mortgage. It's perpetually affordable, when it transfers ownership at some point, that money continues to go into, in that way. But you still have to be able to pay the mortgage itself and so forth. And so there's a, there's a level of readiness to take on that responsibility.
And is it just from the community, or is it from outside the community also?
Oh, anyone can apply, but I, I forgot a really key piece. Is one of the decisions that Central Vermont Habitat had made from the beginning, just ready for, the community for, is that in this case, one of the two units is designated for veteran, veteran families. So that is a focus for this one. But yeah, it's not restricted in terms of who can apply. Which certainly, I would assume, show ties to the community as one of the, you know, factors showing your, your long-term interest in stability as homeowner here.
Thank you for coming tonight, I'm so excited. I've been heard wind of this project for a while, and it's so moving forward. And you answered my two questions, because I wanted to check in about the veteran connection, and also confirm that it's still planned to be a duplex, which you just mentioned, two units.
Yes, if you want a rough idea, they just are finishing the duplex in Randolph. It's actually a, it's gonna look slightly different, front entry or whatever, but it's basically, it's a basic model. It's a company that actually, in terms of the, the frame itself, before you start working on all of it, it comes in four pieces, and a crane puts it in, and you bolt it together, and there's your beginning.
Thank you for serving out the committee, and you too, Jan, I'm really excited this is going forward.
Thank you for bringing this to us, and we'll see how it happens.
Thank you all very much.
Just out of curiosity, that site was a site that was leveled and built up with fill from the highways. Did anybody consider that is, okay, good.
Yes, it was tested, you know, little excavation bits and all that. I think that made, probably was part of it, there was a little bit of a delay, we had heard. They had a property, and then there was some delay, and yes, thank you.
Fantastic, oh look, I might be able to build another one, I've built one already. I participated in building one already. Thank you very much, Ann. Tim Schwartz, accessibility, walkability, and pedestrian safety task force, pedestrian safety improvements, warning signs, rovers, roadside trimming, et cetera. Good job, Tim, you took up two lines, you know.
My stock in ink companies.
All right.
Gonna pay you back.
All right.
So our, our task force came up with a few things that we wanted to bring to the board's attention that are related to safety for pedestrians and everybody, of course. And I broke it up into a couple of categories. The first one is the blindness of approaching the Northfield Falls crossing from, on Route 12 from the north. You cannot see, here I have a picture showing what it looks like. You can't see the crossing in that picture, but you're only about five hundred feet from the crossing. What we think is a good idea, and this is all subject to, I know that V Trans is actually responsible for that part of the highway. So, you know, I doubt you can send anybody out and put a sign up without go along negotiations. But what we're thinking is that something that very clearly says pedestrian crossing ahead, just so that people have some idea. Living in the falls myself, I know that people move at relatively high speed through there. And one of the things we're excited about with this crossing is that hopefully people will slow down, so this is.
What happened to the pedestrian crossing sign, somebody put a surfboard underneath it?
I don't know.
Oh, like on the sign?
Yes, yes.
He was walking across, somebody laminated a surfboard sticker on it.
I haven't thought about that for years, so it's probably not been there for years.
All right, somebody stole the surfboard. I thought I saw, I thought I'd see it when I delivered meals on way.
Isn't it closer to the actual crosswalk? Where's that picture?
I'm not sure. Yeah, it doesn't.
There's no crosswalk.
Right, I think that's where it was, they changed the sign to the surfboard. That's right. Yep, District Six.
Also in that area, the crosswalk, the newest, most recently painted crosswalk in the town of Northfield, I believe, is the one for that that was put on when they finished that project in the fall. And it's, there's not much left of it, which reflects the speed of people.
Specific to that, so I have made a request to District Six to paint that. And I did say, A, if you aren't able to do it, can you authorize me to do it? Because we have finally folks coming into town, supposedly next week, to cross through the crosswalks. But yeah, again, that's under their jurisdiction.
Great, I can cross that. Think about the rest of the crosswalks off my list, defined for me. That, the other thing about that area is that there's this whole family of cones surrounding a very low drain there that's gonna break either someone's axle or their ankle. And I wanted to find, we wanted to find out if there were plans for that, or V Trans maybe has to do that.
Yeah, what has to happen is that that basin needs to be raised up a bit to ensure drainage. Been working with V Trans, finally got that figured out. So Jim Russo, the utility guy, said this Friday or Monday, after talking to V Trans, we'll finally be able to raise that up, so we'll get it up to a point where it collects drainage, and then we're gonna upage you there, so.
Good, I figured there was probably something, but it's been sitting there for a while.
Well, yeah, you know, I'm gonna, as I mentioned, a little bit of frustration with V Trans, two different arms in the agency saying different things, but I have plans, and so working through that. Finally got that part agreed to by.
They gave us a permit, they gave us a design. We honored the permit and the design, and then they changed their mind, they wanted us to take it apart.
A different.
A different group of the same agency.
Yeah, just be thankful the railroad's not involved. It's close, but it's on the other side of the railroad, so, one would think. So the next visibility thing is where the pedestrian bridge intersects with Water Street. And that's really grown up, there's a tree next to that.
Yeah, I walked that bridge the other day, passed it along to the highway.
Yeah, good, great. And from the pedestrian side, you can't, even the pedestrians trying to see off to the right, can't see anything.
Yeah.
So that would be great. So that's one, one thing. And then I took pictures of three different signs with trees growing in front of them inside. I'm confident that there's not nearly, that's not nearly all of them. If it would be helpful, our committee would be willing to write up an inventory of all the obstructed signs that we could find. Would that be something that would be useful to them?
It would be very useful to throw a damn pole saw on the back of a water car. You don't need to involve more people to do what you already know needs to be done. I'm not trying to turn you off, that's how, that's how we clean that stuff up, the bare flippers and polesaw.
That's, that's about what I figured, but I, I'm not quite prepared to go and do that myself, so.
You're not insured and trained to do that.
That's exactly right, yes. Okay, great, that's what we had to say. We do have, yes, a, a safety thing. Oh, I know what I forgot, you can tell what I forgot to mention, that shows up in that picture.
Relative to the footbridge, I met with Jeff, and he shared the, it looks like a, an early version of the bridge project plan. We're concerned about the traffic control, when the D2 in place. I'm a almost daily user of that area and the footbridge. And we can already see with the construction on Main Street, the traffic increase in that area. And are very concerned about when the bridge is not operable, everything coming through there. Of the many pages in the V Trans plan that Jeff sent me, there are three that deal with traffic issues, mostly diverting traffic from Northfield, wherever for trucks, et cetera. But, you know, I think we have to, have to do that, but I don't know how many trucks are just driving through Northfield as a true way, as opposed to coming in for deliveries, et cetera. So we anticipate there's still gonna be, trucks are gonna have to come in and around Water Street, et cetera, in addition to the other traffic. There was no, in our review of that plan, I was hoping that V- There was no, in our review of that plan, I was hoping that V Trans folks would be here today, there's no traffic control changes other than a stop sign on the common. All the signage is about detour. And that, the intersection with the pedestrian bridge, Union Street, Water Street, with everybody going through there, not to mention a number of the other feeders coming in there. I can't imagine everybody coming off West Hill, et cetera, and Union Brook's going to go over Azelton Road to get around. But there's some concerns about speed, take, visibility, et cetera. We do have some questions about additional traffic control. There hasn't ever been a stop sign coming south on Water Street. You know, I've almost, had a few almost there, the folks that don't use turn signals or use them and change their mind and go straight on Water Street. There's no stop, especially with the pedestrian crossing there, the pedestrian bridge. The other, the other issue of the volume that I would pose and I would welcome some updated plans from V Trans is I did a little experiment. So we were looking at what could be done there. Everything from can you put temporary light there, right? So we've actually, I'm not going to share it now, but I've actually been costing some of that out and looking at what it would, what it would take. I did learn, by the way, that the standard boom temporary lights can't be used in that area because of the power lines of the apartment building right on the corner there, right on the sidewalk. But they do make pedestal lights, et cetera, as well as pedestrian signage for a crosswalk on the bridge and probably relocated the crosswalk to have it be more straight at the start of Union Brook instead of that angle coming off our other streets there. The other issue, you know, and this is the cost, is whether there would be warnings. So I've warned it. So I'd like to learn for V Trans if there's a little more sophisticated plan than detour. Because I did an ad hoc traffic study. I went to V Trans and I looked at what the criteria were for a light, using a light in a detour situation. And I think it was somewhere around 275 vehicle crossings in an hour, right? So using, you know, scientific methodology, I bought it Sunday at the ice cream shop and sat on the bench at 7:30 to 7:50, about a half an hour one evening. And I counted 305 at that hour of night, 305 trips over the bridge.
In half an hour.
In half an hour.
Right.
Wow, I, yeah, I extrapolated out from what I saw.
Okay, that would be about an hour.
Right, yeah.
Just curious.
Which exceeded, which exceeded the V Trans recommendations for a light. Now, the question would be, you know, where, where would that be? And I think of all the places in that detour, that Union Brook and Water Street is kind of the, with the pedestrian bridge there, et cetera. Just watching from past behavior for many years of how all that works with all those streets coming in to get in there. So we're just open to learning more about, is there going to be something else other than helping board get through here? Because that's kind of what it looks like right now. If you wanted to cross and use the pedestrian bridge or try to get through that intersection.
Well, I haven't read this because I was going to listen to the fellow that was going to present it.
Yeah.
But the last time I heard anything, we're going to detour, tractor trailers coming through Northfield, so large trucks aren't going to make it. Okay, that's going to work nine out of 10 times a day.
Sure.
Main, the people are going to come down Main Street and then they're going to turn left onto the south side of the common. They're going to redirect traffic. And that's going to be two-way traffic there.
Yes.
Already, I can see that this is going to be a climate show. It's just not going to work. And I, and I don't have a college education, I got common sense. So then you're going to take the traffic and you're going to put all the way back on Main Street by doing the loop. And we'll clean up those areas for visibility. That makes, that's a good point. And then coming back, nobody's ever thought, why don't we just detour traffic? Instead of having traffic going both ways on the common, why not just detour it up to Central Street? It amazes me that they, so they want to bring them back to Main Street through two-way traffic on the south side of the common. And I still haven't seen anything about what's going on with pedestrians.
Yeah.
And I know what's going to happen.
Definitely seen the pedestrian and for multiple times that it's in here, but we have seen it before.
I should have, I should have, I should have, I've seen nothing from the pedestrian that makes me feel like we're doing our job correctly. It's just, I, I grew up in Northfield, I know that the railroad bridge is going to be a shortcut. And that's, it's a fact of life. Four 10-year-old kids are going to say, I'm not walking down there, I'm going to go right over here like this because I want to go get a payment. And that's, we're not addressing that, I don't think.
Well, I, I do want to note that V Trans has prepared final plans, which we got Friday, Thursday, Friday last week. And fortunately, the traffic and pedestrian portion of it has been beefed up from the first one. They've actually added quite a bit. So I can give you a full sec.
This one?
What's that?
Yeah. This is the one we just got?
Yeah, so it has made up.
Got all the photos of all the, like, people.
Yeah, I mean, they've got barricades, they've got all kinds of.
Did you guys request this?
Well, yeah, Jeff sent the one he had at the time.
Right, but I think I was on Friday.
Is this electronic?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
So we have the ability to ship it to anybody that's not on E S M.
Well, I can get it electronically.
Yeah, but sometimes it's nice to have it himself.
Okay, yeah, please, I can share. Yeah, we would like to see it.
I want one.
Yeah, thank you. We just wanted to put that on the radar.
Yeah, I want you to take a look at that and put it down in writing so we can have something to give to these guys that are doing this and saying, look.
Just released it, yeah.
We, thank you for releasing this. Okay, I'll go that far. And we reviewed it, the community has reviewed it and we have the following comments.
We'd be happy to provide.
So Bill was here the last time Gary was here, I recall. You were here the last time Gary was here and you brought up those same concerns.
Yeah, I brought them off, but plans were still preliminary.
Yeah, so as that, I haven't looked, I literally.
It's hard to tell if they included anything. I will say that they, again, for lack of a better term, really beefed it up and have added some nice features. Whether folks feel that it's fully adequate, that's to be decided. But again, it's been significantly enhanced.
Good.
Whether it's adequate is not going to be decided, it's going to be discussed.
Yeah.
We're going to have the discussion with the state over how business construction is done in our town. And we've got some people that have bested interest in how we get around down and we're going to take their input.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for providing.
I'll just add one more small thing that we're especially concerned that if the construction spills over into when school kids are walking through there, the, the safety becomes even more important.
Well, I guarantee you it will.
If it's going to.
I've, I've lived in the real world too, so that's.
It's going to happen with kids on, that's why it's important.
Right, yeah.
It seems like a stop sign.
Doesn't seem like too much to ask.
My speed.
Yeah, minimal.
Yeah.
Yeah. I like the way myself. After, when the, when the kids come back to school, somebody lives in that neighborhood, it's the, I call it the N E S 500, to that whole area, because half the time, oh, I won't even describe the behaviors I see.
310, forget it.
Wow, 7:45, 7:30 to 8 o'clock in the morning, yes.
And that's before the detour.
And that's.
Osteo signs, the city traffic patterns have changed, flashing lights, creative thinking. We can make it as possible and you guys are doing a great job letting us know that we've got some weaknesses in the system.
Thanks for being open to it.
Absolutely.
And the letter from Gary says we need to have the comments to him by the fifth of August.
Letter we just got when he sat down?
Yes.
Have none of us had a chance to read. Thanks, Jan.
Okay.
Does say that.
By the 5th of August.
Wait, is that before he actually presented?
We would appreciate any comments at the time of the August.
Can you push back on that?
I told them, I spoke at like 6 o'clock and I said, you're really pinching this because I only know I should have been there, but I.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Could probably be more effective too if we get the presentation before we have to submit questions.
Yes.
We'll have a million questions if we haven't received the information yet.
You have to, you have to atone your brain to those in government.
Charlie, that's us too.
We're going to bear with you. It took you a while to get awarded.
Some self-loathing right there.
Anybody else? Any other comments on the longest public participation title in the history of Northfield? Comments in TV land or anybody else in the audience? Keep up the good job, you guys. We need your backup. Mr. Royal Delage of Planning Commission Town Forest zoning issues.
How can we help you, sir? I thank you for inviting me here to brief you on an issue that the planning commission has been working on for the past year or so. After the town regulation was adopted last year, we received concerns from members of the conservation commission and other residents in the community that the regulation as it was did not provide adequate protections from development for the town forest. And so we on the commission undertook an investigation as to what possible options might exist to enhance protections from development for land use in the town forest. And we looked at several options. We examined variances in special use permits, which would come through the regulation. We examined easements, which would be outside of our regulation, but would be difficult to deal with, particularly in light of the fact that once an easement is established, it's virtually impossible to get it altered or abated. So we also looked at zoning overlay districts or zones. And after examining these options for potential controls on land use within the forest, we decided that we would pursue the zone, the overlay zone as a viable option. Since the town forest is not specifically identified in the town regulation, it falls under section 3.2.1, which is a low-density residential district. So all the town forest falls in that zone under the current regulation. We wanted to look at options that could be put in place without necessitating reopening the town regulation, first of all, because then you have to open the entire thing for narrow pursuit of a protection for the town forest. So we wanted to, before we moved any further, the summary that you have in your packet outlines Brad. We wanted to get a feel for the sentiment of the board before we took any further action to see if we believe we're on the right track. If we are, we can take next steps or whether we prefer the way to go. Look at other options. Basically, I'm asking for the pleasure of the board at this point. This is something that we have moved to this point. We have some draft language, which of course we've put in a more formal language, that basically identifies the town forest land use controls as they are defined under state statute for the purpose of town forest and exclude all other development possibilities in the overlay zone restrictions.
Questions? Well, everybody's taking notes? Olivia, you have questions?
No, I just want to say thank you for all the effort looking into these options and I very much support doing something to protect the town forest a little more. I think the only question I have is I've always wondered whether, whether there needs to be any different treatment of the area where the water tanks are. Like, would we leave part of Cheneau out of it when we map the section or?
That's a possibility.
In this case, it might be fine to just include it all, but that was just something I've already discussed or something to.
Yeah.
Because that's really the only area I can think of that has some differences in potential for what would happen there.
Yeah, and that, that's a good point. What we've done so far is looked at zone or an overlay district as, as having boundaries that are consistent with the existing town forest boundaries. And I don't have clear definition of where those are, actually.
Yeah, I think that includes the field.
It does, yeah. That would be an option to, to cut out a specific portion of it as defined under the zone or district requirements.
Yes, but I don't know, I mean, it doesn't make any more sense for it to be loaded, to be residential than to be part of the town forest.
Right.
It may not be necessary. I was thinking a bit more if we went the easement route, that it might be more important. To separate it.
Yeah, and again, once, once an easement is, is put in place, it's extremely difficult to get it altered or abated. It's essentially a permanent feature once an easement is put in place. And I'll, I'll tell you that I have, in my experience in government, the last jurisdiction that I was an agency director at, I used an overlay zone for protection of our drinking water sources, which were strictly snowmelt. It's the only source we have for a major urban area. And it worked exceptionally well. And in fact, that overlay zone split jurisdiction between three agencies, mine, the county and the city of Salt Lake. So it worked very well.
I thank you for doing all the work and do, my only concern, the way you identified was the Cheneau farm field, where, you know, that's where a part of our water system lies. So I don't want to jeopardize that.
And I don't see any difficulty identifying the boundaries of what that would be and excise that from an overlay district that would be created through this process.
Thanks again.
Looks good to me, but I'll give, we'll see how the language gets into the zoning breaks.
We will work on that as our next step.
I have one more, Charlie, sorry. When do you anticipate, you got, we got the planning grant, right? And when does that start? I don't know whether we need the help of whoever we work with for that, but.
I'd have to look into that. I don't have an answer for it.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead, Charlie.
Thanks. Royal, have you, has been, has there been any discussion about a overall conservation easement for the town forest?
It's not something we considered.
Okay, and so that is, there is movement to apply for a conservation easement, in fact, at the farmer's market today. I was approached and had many meeting with folks that are interested in getting that. You just, it's interesting that you say once an easement's in place, it's nearly impossible to get it undone. And whereas the differences with this is the design overlay, you can change your overlay if you decide that you need to.
It's simply a regulation in another form, that the town, it's under your control and so on.
So that was, when, when you didn't discuss the conservation easement, was it brought up at this meeting as a potential or had been something in the past?
It's something that we, the members of the commission looked at, but excluded early, early on because of permanency.
Okay.
Charlie, I imagine it's just your choice of words, but it's a little concerning to me when you say you're having many meetings. Unknown groups of people regarding easement through the town forest. So just, you know, a little caution there.
People, people show up at the, you'll end up holding court in public when people come up and say, I'd like to talk to you about something. And they do. And it says, there's not a select one member. I receive phone calls all the time.
Calling it a meeting because we have rules for meetings. But just the language, like, if somebody's just talking to you, of course, but it sounded like you were having a discussion with multiple people.
That's correct.
About easements on the town forest. So I'd just like to make sure you direct those conversations to a public forum.
Those, those conversations were, there's no way to make a conversation when people approach you in public to make that a public forum. I'm not going to turn the discussion off.
We can invite them to continue the discussion.
And that certainly was done.
Great, thank you.
I do not have the authority or desire to make a decision for the town as one person. We have a community, and it seems to be working quite well. We have some things that are a little locked in. We'll get those under cover. All right, so that's, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Well, the NCC has talked about easements for a long time and did a bunch, and the previous planning commission...
That's correct, correct. And that kind of drifted away. And now, it's being resurrected again because there is an interest, there is, without any proof, supposedly, once you have a conservation easement, you have access to funds that don't exist if you have a planning overlay. So, I don't know if that makes it worthwhile. I'm not able to discuss it because you can imagine what it's like to have a conversation at the farmer's market. But I just want to make sure you guys were aware of the discussion that is potentially happening in Northfield.
So, are we talking about the Conservation Commission? Or are we talking about just citizens?
No, it was, it was members of, it was Dave and they're going to have a meeting tomorrow, I think.
So, the Conservation Commission, David Mears.
Right.
We should make sure the Conservation Commission and the Planning Commission are talking to each other.
We have to, because they are going to make a decision on what's going on at the Cheney Farm. Or not a decision, we make decisions. They're going to make a recommendation. And if they haven't spoken to, I think they're meeting the others, right?
Yeah.
Right. Tomorrow, tomorrow. So, that's completely different. But I just want to make sure all of the topics are, nothing is slipped underneath the table anywhere. When this originally came up, when we were reviewing over regulations, the big concern I had for day one was that well field.
Right.
And the ability to conduct business in that well field 60 years down the line, replace the tanks again, or just replace it, and making sure that anything we do to protect the town forest doesn't jeopardize the maintenance thereof. Right. A hundred years is not that far away when it comes to town forest. So, it's going to be an interesting discussion. All right, that's all I got. Thank you, Royal. Is anybody else want to have, join in on the conversation regarding the, I guess we could call that a zoning overlay for the town forest? Okay. Anybody from the audience? Very good. Next thing is to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July regular meeting? So moved. Approved and seconded. Is there any discussion? So, on page, I guess it's page five, item A, the last sentence. Chair Moore's confirmed manager Schultz sent a letter about pallets only after receiving many similar complaints from community members. I want to make, get it in there that the manager was not the only one regarding that pallet issue. He did not act alone. He had a board behind him. So, however that can be put in there, Ken, so the manager was not...
Say a letter from the town?
Confirm manager to send a letter from the town. That would be, that would be good. Just to make sure that we're not leaving anybody else to dry. Is there any other, what's that? What is the change that you want? Just put a letter from the town. Put a letter from the town. Yeah. Even though he's the manager and he is the town, I'm trying to get across that he did not act alone. It was not his decision, it was a board decision. All right, thanks, Ken. Approval of 11 July, special meeting. Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of 11 July?
We have to finish them.
We have to finish them. Darn it. All right, if there's no further discussion on the July minutes, please, if you move approval, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any objections or objections? Motion passed.
I was staying just because I wasn't there.
All right, so we have four...
Three, zero, eight.
Zero. Three, zero, one, thank you. All right, thank you for catching that as I try to brutalize the process. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting on the 11th of July? So moved.
Second.
Hearing first, moving to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of 11 July, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objections or objections? Minutes approved. Minutes on the July 15th, special meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion regarding this meeting, minutes? Hearing done. All in favor of approving the minutes of 15 July, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
And Mr. Maxwell is abstaining. Okay, next is approval of warrant 02-26. I hate to throw a monkey wrench into you, but I am going to suggest that we move, we remove the Queen City invoice for a total of $11,889.82, which is on the top of page eight. There is a revised invoice, but there's also an email for discussion. So, I want to pull the pay that. We are going to remove that, which means, under Town General, that $71,000 would be changed from $59,621.32. I deducted that from there. And the total amount would be $635,448.91. Do I have a motion to approve warrant 02-26? The total is $635,448.91. So moved. Second. Moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Okay.
I was just curious on page four, at all expense, but I was wondering what the animal rescue supplies are.
Yeah, it's a good question. So, from time to time, with the ambulance department, they'll encounter either an issue with a vehicle or nearby with a patient that has a dog. And at times, they've had to corral the dog. So, allow them to buy a harness to safely take care of the dog while the patient's incapacitated.
That makes total sense.
I know, at first, I was like, huh.
Just curious. Unusual title there.
Yeah.
Something else for me?
On page six, the library allocation is wrong. What? Oh! All right, let me get my cap later out here. We'll be doing some numbers. It's supposed to be $11,000. Not $9,300.
You apologize.
I'm questioning, I'm just asking, how did you come up with that figure?
It's $11,000 from the budget that we approved. So, is that in mark?
So, is this in, well, if the budget, so this, is this reflective of July?
Yeah. So, it should have, I don't think it jumped by that much. Well, there's also the $124 or whatever that we were hit with also on this budget. So, in this disbursement, so I don't know what that is. Because we had got it hit. We, so we're getting a tickle of that.
Where is John as well?
So, there's something else that he got hit with $124. Is that in the budget or in the mark? $124. One page. I don't know.
I don't know.
Write it down. So, the $124 is an unknown item. I'm taking... Well, then, let's just find out. Is it $124?
But where would it be? It's tied with the...
Well, it could be utilities. It could be... John, do you know what it was for?
I don't know what it is.
God, you just saw it, and it wasn't right. $124. And so, $143.
This is like a little man here.
Find a $143?
Well, that, no, that's not library.
I feel like I'm fortunate to have taken my Evelyn Woodhead spin unicorn. I wish I had graduated. Oh, we should address the...
Oh, I found it. Bottom of page five.
$726.
This is the TDS thing.
The $126 was...
Well, that's the closest I can think of.
Yep. That's it, library.
But also, yeah, $74, library.
Four, six, two, one. Is that the library number?
Yes, it is.
And is that something the library hasn't... The library, town has paid on behalf of the library in the past?
Yeah. So, and that's what we've just paid. The town paid that.
Yeah, yeah. But this, is this coming out of your life? You don't, we don't, we can't spend that out of your funds, right?
No, we don't have any access.
All right, so we don't have access to your funds. So, this is a town...
The town bank.
Okay, so then, we go down, we go back to the $9,300. Would you accept, Mr. Stevens, that we pay the $9,300 and allow management to, if there is a deficiency, make it up in the next form?
Yes.
You would? Good. Very good. That means we don't have to reach out and relate the bottom line again. Is there any other discussion?
On page 17, a coliform test. Why is the varying amount for the coliform test?
Are you doing access coliform tests because of the project?
Yes.
They go 75, 125, 25, 25, 50, 50, 25, and 50.
Sometimes, maybe they're doing more than one, some of them.
Yeah, there's multiple ones as part of those. So, the base...
I think the base cost is 25.
Right, and then...
I'm sure it's changed.
Locked in, but, yeah.
For one coliform test is 25. And then, if you do, for instance, you go into the library, and they sample various locations in the library, you got to pay for each location?
Okay, I just, that was a good question.
It's a different test. And they do the drinking mountains, too. Because that's where you always find coliform. In fact, coliform exists on the back of your hand. They should say, "We're looking for equalize." But that's not how the test is written.
Now, on page 18, there's a bug spray meter reading. I'm trying to figure out what bug spray meter is going on.
Oh, bug spray pour meter reading, maybe?
Yeah.
Going out meter reading?
Yeah.
Those deer flies pour so bad. I don't know if that's what it was for, but...
Yeah, we allowed Doug Reed to purchase some bug spray because he was...
That's out of control, spending...
I can't believe it.
Okay.
No, no, that's asked away. We, hopefully, we'll have the answers asked away.
Yeah, it just says bug spray.
No reading.
Yeah, it's a funny phrase.
Kind of what you would like to do in Virginia, we're driving around and bug spraying the streets. Hopefully, we'll never get the... That's all I got. Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion from the board regarding the warrant that, to warrant 02-26 for a total of $635,448.91? If there's no discussion, please, if you approve this warrant, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
That's four, zero.
Simple.
All right. And now, we're going to receive the bi-weekly payroll for total through July 6th for a total of $117,371. A motion to receive. So moved. Second. Is anybody want to discuss the payroll, the hours, the salaries that are being paid for in this warrant? Hearing no discussion? All in favor of approving, receiving the bi-weekly payroll for $117,371, keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving right along. We're going to have the opportunity to appoint the board of listers, appointing to the board of listers. We have a letter that's endorsed by the chairman of the board of listers. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
The approval was for, thank you very much. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Alexandria Naduk, a press expressing interest in the vacant Mr. Officer in office. And she has a vaitai that is pretty impressive for what she's done regarding that. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor of approving Alexandria Naduk, I think that's the correct pronunciation. The position of listers, say so. Do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Four, ovo? This is not an action item. I don't think we need to make the next item an action item. We have a requirement to get a lot of people trained to take the ethics training. All of the board, the management, the economic development, and a couple others have done so. We have till, I think it's September 7th, to accomplish that.
25th, I believe.
What's that?
September 25th.
27th. We have, anybody from the town moderator to the board of listers? There is a long list, almost three-quarters of a page-long list of people that have to take this. And I have not seen any letter go out. So, Mr. Manager, the reason I haven't seen one is the moderator happens to share a house with me.
Okay.
She has now received an invite, and that's how I kind of take a pulse of what's going on.
I think we sent something out, but hopefully, if we left it...
Do people, you send it clearly so they know they're one of the people?
Yeah, but we...
Because every quasi-judicial, the DRB, all right?
Oh, we'll definitely get it out. I noticed everybody.
Right, we need to get the notice out now because first off, you have to wait. If you're in my life, you have to wait for a rainy day that the internet isn't affected and you've got power. So, we would really like to give the opportunity to these people to schedule it and not have to say, "It's the 20th of September, get it done." I don't want to be in that position. So, please, get the letters, a nice letter of invitation. These people can have the decency of not having to be under the gun. So, hold it, sorry. I will bring this to your attention. I did watch a meeting of the DRB, and some inaccurate information was...
and some inaccurate information was, was delivered to the committee from the zoning administrator, saying it was not a requirement. So I think we need to start with staff and telling them it is a requirement.
The other thing, who just pictures.
Because those, the boards, as our code, don't stop by. If we're hearing.
Well, I heard it in the.
No, I believe you, I believe you.
And I listened to it and I said, and in fact, I made a comment to Lydia like the last week.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll make sure.
There's gotta be clearly complying that it is not optional, that it's a requirement.
But it's only for the boards with quasi judicial or whatever.
Which the DRB is.
The DRB is, yes, but not.
The moderator doesn't have any authority other than to follow Robert's rules.
I don't know, the LCT had a good list, we should just, you know, look at the list. It's not like the town for stewardship committee, they don't have to, but like the board of civil authority, I think, everybody out there, the board of the baitman.
It's a long, it's a comprehensive list.
And of course, everyone has to take the training, whether or not they are required. But in the letter, just make sure they, I think Ken, because he's keeping track, make sure they email the result, the completion to Ken, there's an option in there that says, do you want a receipt sent to someone else? So in the email, make sure you tell everyone.
I have those from the selectmen members, yes.
Yeah.
What was that, Ken?
I have those from the selectmen members, too.
Yeah.
Thank you, you need to communicate that sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I want to make sure.
Town manager's report.
Thank you. As you can see, my report just gave an update on the Main Street Bridge, it seems to be progressing pretty well, generally on schedule. As you can see now, they're out at Main Street, lamp.
Not the Main Street Bridge. The water.
Yeah, the placement.
You said Main Street Bridge.
No, I'm sorry.
No problem.
It's wishful.
I was gonna say, wow, they're doing it already?
I'm sorry, the water, Main Street Waterline, thank you. Yeah, making good progress, on schedule, on Main Street, installing pipe. They are actually going to be on Prospect sooner rather than later. And I found that out through Jerusalem, so I'll get another letter to folks and get something out on Front Port Forum and Facebook. At least by the end of the week, they may start putting in some temporary water. But again, generally is, is on track. With the tank portion of the project, they have removed all the old tanks, pretty impressive to see. It was tough to get up there, but it was impressive to see. And now they're at the point where they're going to start installing a new tank. So, so I'm pretty excited to see that. Real quick, the Main Street sidewalk project, they're also progressing well, they're on track. Very pleased with the work going on thus far. The engineer is pleased with work as well. Tax sales, this time of year, we'll start tax sale process, we're going to have 15 or 16 property owners work on agreements and try to notch those folks along. We have had a number of requests for some street sign replacement, as we've talked about. It's amazing, we have a lot of signs get stolen, we have some damaged signs, so I asked the highway department to make that a priority. I know up on Cox Brook, somebody had taken speed signs, I don't know what that's all about, but.
So Jeff, when you brought this up to our attention the last time, I suggested that we use blocking fasteners.
Yeah, and I.
Yep.
And I, yeah, it's amazing, people.
There are fasteners now that prevent.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Ease of that, I'm not saying that will prevent that.
Yeah.
I worry I'll be up there with a saw.
Sounds to me, not only do we have missing signs, but we also have signs you can't see because of the trees growing.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds to me like we got a sign problem, there's a saw about that, we're back in the eighties.
Thanks. Real quick, last, we've hired a new bookkeeper to fill Deborah Brady's position. I know it took a little bit of time, it was a little bit of tough process, particularly with the employment market out there wages and things like that, but so I'm pleased with the person that we've hired, and that person will start all this for.
That's nice, because we have one employee in accounting.
Well, Lori's.
And Lori, Lori is a consultant that comes in and helps, there's a lot of pressure on that one employee.
Yeah, oh yeah, yep.
And I think she's doing a great job and she's also had some, in the last couple of weeks, some difficulties. So, that she managed without a complaint, she's a valued asset.
Yep. I'll say thank you.
Cool.
Is there anything that the board would like to make comment on?
Yes. So at the last meeting, the manager said that he's anticipating the repaving of Main Street five to seven years. What is the plan when this construction is done? Are we just gonna have a patched road?
No, all those will be, all of Main Street will, in the project area, that's, well, let me see. Main Street from the bridge back to Central will be paved, there'll be patched.
It will be paved from curb to curb?
Yes.
Okay.
But on the other side, it'll be just patched, paved.
What do you mean on the other side?
On the north side of the bridge. Oh, okay.
Why was, why is that, just by chance?
Just because of just the way the cuts are, as you can see, they're kind of all over the place.
So north of the Main Street Bridge, they're just going to patch that, have they cut there?
Yeah.
They have.
Yeah.
So they're gonna patch that as best they can, and then everything south of the Main Street Bridge, curb to curb.
To Central Street.
To Central Street is going to be repaved.
That's good, because I was really concerned about that.
Prospect, no.
Prospect is going to be a shim, or, right.
Well, we have shinned in the past to get a spot. That's why I was concerned about it.
Yeah, we were paved, so this is gonna change our paving schedule for the state on the 11-year rotation?
Oh, yeah, but it's been how many years since our last pavement?
On Main Street?
Yeah.
It was before my.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Held up.
So now you're saying, and that's what, how many years?
What?
You've been here?
Eleven.
Yeah, so, so 11. And then, you're saying another five to seven? Wow. That's 17, 16 years, 18 years.
And before this current project come on, came on, with the exception of, I thought the road was in pretty decent shape if I, if you remember back to where it was when they repaved it the last time, it was, it was.
Well, we shouldn't, I was on the village board of trustees as well, with Colin Bryant, and there was some debate, we shouldn't, we shouldn't Main Street. Because it was so bad.
Right.
We just did a skim coat until get us through.
Now, Brian, and.
Are they gonna take you 14 years ago?
Up to Water Street. Yes. So now, so with the CSO project, they took, fortunately, took out a lot. So now, they'll take out the remaining amount of concrete on the south side of the bridge. So, let me step back, so it was removed from Central up to about the municipal office. So with this project, the remaining concrete in the street from about the municipal building to the bridge will be taken out, the concrete.
Municipal office to the bridge.
Right.
But you just say that it was removed, it was removed from Central Street?
All to the municipal office? No, no, I'm, you're right, not that.
That's what I heard. It hasn't, that's what I heard, it wasn't in front of my house. It wasn't.
All, all area within CSO.
Yeah, and I was just south of that.
Right, I, yes, thanks.
Yeah.
So they're gonna take it from where the CSO ended all the way to Central Street and remove the concrete for this water project?
No.
So we're still gonna have concrete.
From, from where the CSO stopped about, what was that?
Spring Street.
South Street.
South Street.
So the concrete from South Street all the way to the bridge will be removed.
Yeah, that's good.
What is she, get it up? Central Street.
Well, we can if we find the money.
Well, quit taking such big vacations, we can spend your, your vacation money on things.
You know, I haven't gotten an express bill yet, so.
That was a nice vacation. Hey. Next.
Since we're on the project, I know, I already talked to Jeff, but I know that the people in my community didn't get letters in advance of the water, you know, shifting over and got, you know, groundwater.
It was three or four houses.
I think that Dave also.
My house.
Did you get a lot?
My apartment, my tenant was in the middle of a shower and and the sediment that came out for three days.
Three days.
Three days was pretty bad.
Anyway, just want to make sure, I don't know how we make sure that that is improved.
Yeah.
Going forward, like, it sounds like people on Prospect Street need to
Yeah.
hear from the town and making sure we're getting people in apartments because they care equally when there's water to the trail with the landlord.
Shower, they have a big shower.
No, no, I know. There's been a couple of situations where these folks have not let me know. Like, they didn't let me know until a day or two before about cutting across the Domino's parking lot, and I'm like, and they didn't let me know about shutting a portion of the common, I'm like, every time, I told you, this community, like all communities, we need better communication, so.
Communication is key because.
Do you want me, I, I got to the point, I said, do you want me to start with holding checks? As I said, I know.
That's not the way to conduct business, by making threats over.
Well.
But people don't feel angry if they know what's happening, and so it's not.
Yeah, I would say, just in general, was a letter sent to residents of South Main Street at the beginning of the project?
Yeah.
It was, yeah, I thought there was.
So, alright.
But just keeping those up to date, and I'm glad to hear that you're gonna do more Facebook and Front Port Forum, because I think that, like, people are very, all the time wondering, what's going on and why are we digging up the town? And, and they don't always see the posts, so that's why the repetition is really important. Easy question, I think, is, did we, did we participate in the compensation survey that the LCT puts out? We do, and then we get a copy of it, so we have it.
Yeah, we always participate, yeah.
Great. I went to that BLCT meetup for Central Vermont, there weren't a ton of people there, but it seems like a really valuable thing, and so it sounds like CVRPC is willing to host them either quarterly or maybe once every six months. It just seemed nice to.
Well, wouldn't be a better time to do it.
Yeah, it's, that was, this was a hard time year to have a meetup, people are away. But it was nice, Berlin was there, Montpelier, Middlesex, Worcester, Callis. And it's really interesting, I mean, I'm not envious of those communities with the, Middlesex had $10 million in road damage from the last two years of flooding. I can't even. But it was a great opportunity to hear from other communities and talk about like potentials for supporting each other. And then one little tidbit from, and Royal, you're still our representative to CVRPC, right?
I am.
He might have heard of this, they were talking about a dream of like them maybe being able to be a purchaser, purchaser of things like, say culverts. Get lots of them so that the towns could buy, they might be able to get a reduced rate and everybody was buying together instead of us all individually. And maybe for other things other than that, so that just sounded like something.
That should be at the state level, yeah, because we buy vehicles at the state level, don't we?
Yeah, we all have state bid, yeah.
But the, you know, it's something.
So the state doesn't allow us to buy culverts or stuff through that same?
Not that I'm aware, but I can check, yeah.
I mean, that, if the state is already, we should do it.
If it's in place already, yes, I'd be great, I would think CVRPC would know if it's already.
EJ Press got up on the airport road.
Right, so, right, that's where, that's where I see the invoices from.
What's that?
EJ Press.
Yeah, yeah.
So made a suggestion that's gonna make you, the hero of Vermont, by saying, have five regional 10 regional places where the highway districts get to store the culverts and there's a very method that we can work with.
Sure, easier for the, for the distributor to. What were they, have you an idea?
Well, I would encourage others to go if they have more, I thought it was really useful. And then the last thing I want to say is that I saw the BYCC work up on the town. They added the trail around a sensitive area and improved it and they made an overlook at the Beaver Pond, and there's some nice benches there, and it's a really nice spot to stop and enjoy the beauty.
Did they complete that project up at the school?
They, in April, did a first round of cutting, and we're currently working with them to come back in August for one more week to do some drainage work over there, so, um, and one more.
It's good.
And kind of talk to them and how we're gonna be able to pick out some priorities in there.
That's all, thank you.
Mr. Stevens.
Clark Road. It seems like we had a problem up Clark Road. It seems like we had a problem up there with a non-sective system and people.
The zoning issue, is it on Clark or is it on, it is on Clark.
It is on Clark.
The zoning issue we had that.
Oh, Roy Waters, right.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it went through the court system. The court required that the folks who were on that property or living on that property in violation of ordinances were required to move from the property and not occupy the structure there. So those folks have moved out of that structure and have met the court requirements. So Mitch and I have been going up there periodically and making sure, so. And also, a couple of neighbors have been kind enough to let us know if the structure there is being occupied. And so we have found that they have not occupied that. My understanding is the folks that were in that structure have moved to alternative dwelling in another town as mandated by the court.
Okay. So the court did anything for the destruction of the structure?
No, because they were able to get a permit for that structure as like a garage or something, so they did get that permit. But again, the key thing is, they had to move out, plus they had attempted to put in some kind of temporary not the most technical sewage disposal system, so the court also mandated that that be disabled and removed, so they removed that, they're not living there. So, real quick, the other thing is, you know, there were two violations going on there, property, the other involved the original owner of the property, Mr. Waters, and the court issued a $10,000 fine for those vehicles. Impartial payment, not close to what it's supposed to be. So at some point, the attorney and I, and then probably the board will have to decide if the municipality wants to take further action to recoup those fines and any costs. I, I, I think the, the town had some real experience with that, just before I got on with the property owner down on Western Ave where, you know, you took the property.
Well, we will address that in a meeting, warrant for that purpose, and we will have a complete package of what all of that means.
Sure, yeah. All the lower, what the hell happened to you? Yeah, you know, again, Ed mentioned the, the depth issue, the, the unit that's producing, or they collected that and sends it to the issue, there was an issue with the sensor and it caused some problems. Fortunately, they caught it, did not run it. Which if they had continued running it, it would have caused massive problems for the, the engine. So why did it have to have a tow bill? Uh, just because it, there was no other way. Just because it, there was no other way to move, they really.
They didn't want to, they didn't want to run it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just trying to bear with.
No, ask away, like I said.
Dollar General, has that, has that property been deeded to us yet?
Not quite, so, quite some time ago, I had a survey done, boundary line survey, plus I had Mr. Smith prepare the needed deeds. Those were sent to Dollar General. They have told me that they are okay with the transfer, but now they're having attorneys look at it just to look at the words. You know, and unfortunately, what they're saying is that they've had a lot of turnover, they have several attorneys, and it's one office handling, I don't know how many thousands of stores they have. So, they've committed, they've agreed to it, they have all the documents. Again, I got the boundary line survey done, I got the deeds, and so it's just a matter of those folks, the attorneys just making sure the legal phrases are proper.
Okay. And a crosswalk's going to be done by?
Yeah, again, two months ago, I signed a contract with a very credible firm, and they're very busy. They told Carl, I keep asking Carl, he told me that, they said they'd be here the twenty-sixth to get it done, so. I know, every year, and the original firm that we thought we had four months ago, was not able to get insurance, so they went out of business, and then we got another very good firm. I signed a contract two months ago.
So, we're, we're going to have the cross, the painters of the crosswalks come into town. How many are they going to miss during this, on this water project? Because we're going to repave.
They'll, right, yeah, so.
And they're going to pay their own, they're going to do their own crosswalk. So, are we going to ask this company to put crosswalks over construction debris?
No, no, so where it makes sense to have those, we'll do it. Where it's going to interfere, and they said they would deduct that, you know, and so we'll keep a very detailed accounting.
Right, got you, just want to make sure.
No.
Spray and paint, or it's going to be dug up.
And I haven't seen any improvements to the community room. Still missing a ceiling tile over there.
Yeah, we had another problem there, but I hear you're making it a priority. I know, I've been saying that forever and ever.
And Elroy can tell me, but I haven't seen any engine brake signs in the falls.
There's one.
There's one, huh?
Going north?
One south.
One going uphill.
Yeah. Almost, probably over my house.
Yeah, there was some question about enforcement again with.
It's not about enforcement. When you're going uphill, you're not going to be using a J brake. When you're going to go down a hill, that's when you use a drag brake. When you're going through the falls, you're headed north, you're going to be on, you're going to be using a drag brake. You take brake going north. If it's on the west side of the road, that means you're headed south, which means you're going uphill, and you're not going to be using a J brake.
It's on the side, it could be on the other side, on the other side of the falls.
Oh, I would swear, I was not aware of that, thanks for letting me know.
So, it's basically going to be a reminder.
Oh, I can.
Unless you put, well, I suppose it could be a warning for people going north. That would be, people going south, no J brakes, and that means it would be better off if you put it at the United Church parking after Town Hill, right across the street from the library. Now you're going downhill and say, "No J brake." But it's just an advisory thing.
Yeah.
We don't have a law, there's already somebody saying that we shouldn't be doing anything anyway, and all right, fine.
I saw one on Twelve South.
Right.
Yeah, coming in.
Yeah. It seems like it's silly there, but anyway.
We're just trying to get the words out to, you know, we're a community, a neighborhood, we don't need to have you.
We're just asking people be polite.
Be polite, consider it, thank you, that would be nice.
Good one. On the project tracker, Town Road fifty-six, Highway fifty-four. What is, is that out the pit?
No, we don't have enough funds, you remember, with the budgeting process, so this year, we'll put, additional funds will be put in to be a sufficient amount to make it happen.
Okay. And the Vine Street pedestrian bridge, what's the story on it?
So, I asked Daniel's construction for an inspection and price, and they've been dragging up feet, but they said they'd get me that. I said I needed Charlie, and so they're providing that.
Okay. That's all I got, thank you.
Well, bridges are a topic of discussion. We had a late complaint of awareness, if I may talk about.
Sure.
Slaughterhouse Bridge, which is only two years old. I think we're going to change the name of Slaughterhouse Bridge to Western Star Bridge, because it's beginning to eat a lot of money. So, we had a contractor go in and say, give one report on the Slaughterhouse Bridge, had another contractor come in and say, "Slaughterhouse Bridge needs to have a reduced weight limit on it." The property owner is justly concerned, it's haytime. It's time to start putting hay across the bridge. So, we have two for-profit companies saying two different things, and now the state's going to get involved, and we'll find out what this actually means if we do have to lower the rate, rating on the, weight rating on the bridge. Other than that, I have nothing. Is anybody else in the public like to participate in this joyous meeting? Hearing none, is there anybody from online that would like to participate in this meeting? I hear none. Do I, do we have any reason to go into executive session?
Yeah.
I would like to have a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second. Don't hurry, don't waste your time. Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Jeff, do you want to add one of these to Mary's packet? I'm so excited about that project.
Add that to your family?
Yes, it's just going to be so great, and they want to keep going if they, yes, a great location. It would be nice, that deep thing.
So, we had thirty, forty to thirty people show up.
Elroy. First two rows, because they had a guy with his trailer, you know, he had a transformer. Put down slides, table saw, I mean, I was fascinated, this guy had that, and so they needed.